And. All right, wait for Dr. Hackett. Morning, everybody.
Morning. You can probably opening call the way.
All right.
Well, good morning, everybody. While we bring Ms. Bowden, I say back up. Let's call the order at ten thirty four A M. This regular meeting of the Winchester School Committee. We have one agenda item this morning before we go into executive session. And that is to discuss the student handbooks for the two twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Hopefully, we've got some people here to present.
And we have people here to present. So for those, how do we want to actually handle this, Dr.?
Well, I mean.
Do it by developmental stage?
Why don't we go? I I think that if we just talk about changes, we don't.
Yeah.
Didn't ask them to formally present, but really just focus on what the changes are. And as I've shared with them, we're extracting the cell phone language and treating it by itself now. So, yeah.
All right. So who should come forward first? Elementary, high, middle?
Seniority in in highest chain on developmentally.
Oh, no, not not.
I would say I think.
I'd agree.
Elementary first.
Yeah. Remember. Yeah, when we.
Elementary first.
Yes.
So let's start with elementary. There is there is a will of the committee. Sorry, Mr. Mahoney. We are disproportionately elementary people at the table, so. We do. We do love all developmental stages, though. All right.
Great.
So this is not the year twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty four. Those are.
These are all red line.
Changes that are red line.
Marketing back to the days of Aaron Allen.
Welcome our elementary principals.
Thank you.
And just so you know, so Karen is actually, so we're doing a hybrid meeting today. So Karen is joining us via via Zoom link. So she is here as well. So we are a committee of five and welcome you to our table.
And you are our mayor. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, and you're also on the owl. So, yeah, it's. You nicely don't have to look at all of the awkward poses it takes of various people during the course of of the meeting.
And it's nothing live streamed, but recorded.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. So I I will start with there's we very few changes to our yearbook this year, and those that are the changes that we have made are indicated with the red strike throughs and and mostly they are either personnel updates for the district and for the various schools, and then also some of the policy language later on, as you scroll down. But nothing particular to any one elementary school.
We're getting started.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Marin, for your.
Twenty one.
Scroll.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Lynn Zell made some she had some additions and some changes, and I just went through just to try to highlight those. And those came directly from her health.
Is that a?
Snap portal.
That's not a change.
That's not a change.
Just happens to be high. Oh, it's.
It's a very normal. Yes.
Got it.
Removal that addition, please, because Marlena actually, we gave a little bit more of a comprehensive overview of the programs.
Yep.
Which is the website. So we added that in here.
Very great. And then Ms. Bowden, I say, is this policy ECAC? Is that an update? That's an update that we voted on. That.
Should be. And I was gonna say we
So that was that was mine.
We should probably, if for the committee to, if you want to do approval or just first read whatever you want to do, but we need to go back through and probably have a policy sub to make sure that we have anything for the policies.
That's what I would say. Yeah, okay.
Aaron would have.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So I'm just pulling up the elementary school handbook on my screen because I can't see it on my iPhone. But I was going to say that just based on just skimming through the high school handbook, it seemed that a number of the policies that were listed in the back, which I think is it it just happens when you have hard copies of the policy and copied into the document. Some of them were referring to, it just had minor updates. There were the nursing policies, as you mentioned. And, yeah, so I think there were a few that we need to go through and just make sure that they're up to date.
And it appears, Dr. Hackett, there's a link there.
There isn't.
To the full policy.
Yes. And so if you recall, two years ago, three years ago, there's Aaron did a lot of where the principals did a lot of rearranging, and we did take the policies that are referenced and and actually elementary handbook, I don't think really had the full text of policies in. So we added that. And we put them all at the back of the handbooks just to visually keep it separate so that it's easier to it's not embedded within. So we can just just go through and make sure that it's all up to date.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Was there anything else substantive?
It looks like. Are you on page? Yeah, we went by. So there's, yeah, maybe the principals can tell us. Is there anything else that sort of?
No, at this time, there is not.
Okay.
So it's mostly just clean up and getting the policies online.
Yes.
Are we taking each of these individually?
I think we should. Yeah.
So I'd be happy to make a motion to accept the elementary handbooks as presented, given the ability for the policy subcommittee to ensure that the policies included in the handbook match the policies that have been approved by the school committee and policy subcommittee. With the exception of cell phones.
No.
No, it's only.
Just the elementary.
No, we're gonna, we will know. It's both. It's all three levels.
Oh, we're gonna.
Yeah, because we need we need to come up with common language that we're gonna use, I think, because we can.
On it. The policy of first.
But but also, if we could pause for a second, that also included a conversation about parent communication, right? And the ability to contact your child during the school day, that's outside of the phone policy as stated right now in policy, I mean, in the handbook.
Um, I think that policy would remain the same, Ms. Menyarji. It would be specific to the cell phone policy.
But right now, communication with parents and guardians.
Right.
Um, that's a separate section. That's on page. What is this? Eleven? Um, that's outside of the cell phone policy. So we were talking about saying, don't contact your child through their personal device during the school day. All communications should go through the central office. So using that communication with parents section, maybe we can put a line.
Okay, all right. Yeah. So you had the addition of the expectation?
Yeah.
Good.
Would that come, though? I'm thinking, I'm just thinking, would that not come under the cell phone policy, though? Because.
It would be the easier way to do it because then you wouldn't have to make the exception of pulling this piece out right now.
Yeah.
And then what we could do, which wouldn't, we could, wouldn't, when you do the cell phone language, we can come back and we could, at the same time, you could, you could add it then, too. Would you have some recommended language for that to tie it in? Because I think it's, it would make sense to have it in both places.
Exactly. Reiterating it doesn't hurt.
And we don't.
But I also wanted to be consistent.
Yes, yep.
Because that's the issue we've run into before.
Yep, yep, agreed, agreed. So we'll take it as one package within the cell phone language.
And it's just simple language that says all communication has to go through the main office.
Yeah, right.
Yes, full stop.
But current, just to be very clear, currently, there's no. So currently, devices are not permitted at the elementary schools.
Correct.
And also.
Correct.
Which.
No, I'm sorry. Smartwatches are allowed.
Well, the intent is to try to not allow them.
To have the same policy where as smartphones, they are put away and off. Not.
It'll be part of that discussion. So that that's pulled out, too. So I think what I'm hearing is that it would be good to also with in coordination with wherever we go with the cell phone policy or or language to reiterate to parents and to re-educate parents that you need to call the office, that we have an actual phone mainline and that you should not be contacting, and this is K really K twelve, right? Your child up based on their with their own personal device.
During the school day.
During the school day.
Because like bullet point number one under communication with parents, parent contact, parents should contact teachers by email. Right, right. So in addition to that, to expand the language today, other student-based concerns should be directed through some main office. For Dr. Hackett's office.
Have a session motion.
Thanks.
Which which takes into everything you said.
With the exception.
Well, no, we'll talk about that, I think, as part of the cell phone planning and make the adjustments when we do that.
My hope.
Sure, pretend.
Um, yes. So I just want to make sure. Sorry, I was thinking for a second.
We'll knock it off.
You want to be all right.
I just want to make sure that we got the motion correct, which is so two things that we are accepting the elementary handbooks as presented with two exceptions. One of them is the exception around the the fact that we're going to ensure that policies voted by the policy subcommittee, as well as the full school committee, are included as needed in the handbook. And we are also going to do two things around cell phone and smartwatch usage, which is to leave open the creation of a new policy, which will cover both the fact that neither of those is allowed at the elementary level, as well as a procedure for parents to contact students during the school day.
I think we're just leaving open.
We're just leaving it open.
Leaving the cell phone policy open.
Yeah.
I think the discussion hasn't happened yet.
Right. And no, but I just want to make sure that because we're approving this text. And so.
So I guess maybe to simplify, say, except for the cell phone or smartwatch usage section and communication.
Correct. That was because I was.
Those two sections.
Because I was currently on the page ten section. You were also talking about.
Ten and the.
The section about.
Right.
Contact. And so I guess my question is, which I'm trying to like struggle towards is like, do we want to leave the three sections open? Cell phone, smartwatch usage, policies as voted by the school committee, and also parent contact sections.
I I wish to.
We'll leave the parent contacts.
Correct. That's why I'm trying to.
Yeah. We, because the the, sorry, Tom, the the handbooks are always live.
Right.
So we can always update it and align it as we do it without bringing you all back here.
Right. That's what I'm sorry. I'm just, my brain is kind of like, I'm trying to get to a place where you don't have to come back.
Yeah.
And we don't have to worry about this again.
We love having. We love.
But it is somewhere in.
Or something else.
Correct.
Right. So I think that the handbooks are live, but then also at the beginning of the school year, the principals from each of the schools can reiterate to parents that, okay, that from going forward, um, this is how the how communication should flow through the office if you need to contact your student.
Yes.
And in the meantime, we're in the meantime, or before then, we catch up the handbook.
Yeah, I was just gonna agree with this. Bergstrom on not having the additional section because there might be other additional sections when we get the policy. So is, you know, make sure it's consistent with our policies. Uh, exempt the cell phones. We think we're gonna talk about that a little bit more at the next meeting. Um, and then whatever impact it has on communications or other sections, we'll just take up at that time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we'll consider that that's the motion. Um, we need to do a roll call vote because we're on hybrid. So we'll start with Ms. Bowden, I say.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Ms. Menyarji.
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Hi.
And the vice chair votes aye, and we are approved to that point. Thank you so much.
For our elementary team.
Thank you.
Ninety four degrees today. All right. So I guess in that case, we're calling up Mr. Lynn next.
But also just, uh, just maybe you already mentioned this in here, but on page four of all, well, on page four of the elementary handbook, it's also included the other handbooks. We added, I think it was last year, the year before, a disclaimer basically saying adopted policies and procedures, the Winchester School Committee, School Department shall supersede all statements and information. Right, so.
Right.
Yep.
Because we do change policies during the course of the school year with the policy subcommittee, and as you know, and I just made a note to myself, I'm not sure that we probably go back in the handbooks, update those during the school year.
Right.
No, just when.
No.
Parents aren't refreshing the handbook every day, so whenever we.
That's disappointing.
Again.
That's disappointing, but yes.
I think that's a good disclaimer. Um, you know, if you're ever rewriting it again, I might suggest that the calling out the fact that these handbooks changed throughout the year. It's implicit in that statement, but.
That the policies will.
Yeah, because we're.
The policies or handbook may change throughout.
Yeah, because to your point, if someone printed out the the handbook or saved to PDF or just read it a month ago, and we have school committee meeting, it may have changed.
Yep.
Um, just so they're on notice that that they need to go back and look at the current version.
I'm still in.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good, welcome. Good morning. Um, would you, how would you like to approach this? I know that we have a document from you that actually has the actual minimal changes that are in.
Right.
So if you'd like to go ahead and review that, maybe that's a good way unless you have another presentation to provide.
No, I don't. So I'll go with the way that you recommended. It's really two substantive changes in addition to the ones that my elementary colleagues have talked about. Um, so the first one, the most substantive one is about cheating and plagiarism. So currently, that language in there is just not adequate. And it talks about if a child cheats, then it's a zero, which is not what we do. We typically have the student, we talk through it with the students and have the student redo it because we don't want the cheating to take away from the learning experience. So again, that language, it's not adequate. So what we did was we met with the directors and also through the school council, and we found out that language that the the high school has matches what our practice. And so we're proposing adopting that language and just put it into the middle school handbook. And so clarification about what cheating is, clarification what plagiarizing is. And at the end, I added the steps that we will take to help students that decide to plagiarize and cheat. And so those are the the responses that might happen depends again on the the level of the offense and also how frequently. So we will go from having a conversation with the students, working with the students to figure out what is the appropriate restorative steps that we'll be taking all the way up to if this is constantly happening, then there will be disciplinary consequences.
Great.
Okay, so that's the first part. The second part is pretty minor. As you know, we have a couple of colleagues and some students as well that is very sensitive to perfumes and also colognes that's being sprayed in hallways to the extent that some of our staff can't work under those circumstances. We have to, teachers that to go home feeling ill because they have developed migraines after smelling perfumes. And we do have language about creating physically a physically offensive condition. So I just expanded the language to include using perfumes and colognes just to remind my folks that we shouldn't do that in school. Okay, you can certainly welcome to apply those substances at home, which for some of our students, we highly recommend that you do, especially.
You have to be full body, but.
Yeah, but.
There are strategic locations.
Exactly, because we have to think about, we live in a community, and there are people that cannot physically attend school, both students and also staff, when folks are spraying perfumes and colognes. So.
Can I just ask, or did you have a question to? I. Um. So this gets a lot into personal space. And I know, like, just having a teenager, a lot of sort of the deodorants and things.
Body wax.
To a lot of sprays and applications, especially for environmental concerns for kids and families, no aluminum on, things like that. How would you determine the line? Are you just asking they not be used at school?
Correct. And not spraying.
So if a child comes in and smells of cologne or perfume, you're not going to address that child and be like, that you're not able to be in school.
Correct. And when this happens, we typically, and again, when this happens, we, it's really not a situation that a child's being malicious. Right, again, it's typically eighth graders, and they want to present themselves well, which we support. And so they forget that when I do that, that impacts other people. And so the message, again, same thing with plagiarism, with cheating, that we have a conversation with them, we don't expel them, we help them understand that our behaviors have impacts on other people. But in this particular case, it's more about the fact that you're spraying it in the hallway in places where it's crowded, especially around areas where there are folks that are sensitive and to the point that they cannot physically be in school when they're exposed to that substances.
Because I want to make sure that also if kids have an issue with that, that you're providing a space perhaps where they can do that because it would also be highly stigmatizing for a child to have body odor that they can't control.
Right.
Because that could lead to to bullying or ridicule also. So I just want to make sure that we're covering the student aspect of this as well.
Well, absolutely. For students that has that needs to apply, and again, we're only talking about perfumes and colognes. Most of our colleagues who are sensitive to that are not sensitive to deodorants. And so there are students, we work with them, and typically through our nursing staff to counsel them, this is how you apply. And we also provide them with substances with deodorants if the families cannot. And so we do do that discreetly, we do that respectfully to help students that your body is changing. And so again, just as when you apply that impacts other people, the reverse is the same. When you don't apply that also, you know, impacts other people as well. And so if your struggles in that area, we do want to counsel you and work with you and educate you on how to do that. So we can all be in an environment that we can learn.
Okay. Um. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I just appreciate you being mindful of this growing trend. This is a big. I noticed this at the ANCA fair where I saw someone sell a spray of a high-end cologne.
Right.
Because it's this TikTok trend to promote these really high-end perfume. Um, but I think it's the actual sprick, right? It's because it just spreads everywhere. It's like a deodorant, like a roll-on deodorant, doesn't so much.
Correct.
You know, enter someone else's space. So I appreciate that your nursing staff is going to have those conversations and provide alternatives. So, no, thank you again. And it's going, I feel like this is a growing trend, uh, which I I was confused about initially, but I I appreciate, you know, self-expression in many ways. So thank you.
There's a lot of things I'm confused about, too, that I find for TikTok, so you're not the only one.
If you watch TikTok, it explains it all.
Exchange of five dollars for a spray of Chanel something or another. I was really confused by that.
Yeah.
But there's definitely a lot of perfume and cologne out there, so I think this is helpful.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Hopcroft, Ms. Bowden, I say, do you have any?
I'll just say, yeah, I appreciate it. It's a difficult issue. I have a niece who even, it's not aerosolized, has problems with being around perfumes and scents. It needs to have a sort of scent-free world. So I know there's a continuum. And so while in that case, maybe you find a place where they can be without scents, you know, to that next group of people, and then you get to the kids who need it. And so you've thought through all these different stages. And so I appreciate the thoughtful approach and thought of all this.
Ms. Bowden, I say.
Um, yes, I would say, what's, am I muted? I hope not. I don't think I can see being. Um, no, I think this is, I think this is a thoughtful addition, and I also have a relative who's sensitive to scents to or, yeah, scents of perfumes and colognes, which has been an issue. So I think this is a helpful addition.
Great. Um, so.
As well as taking the language from the high school on cheating and plagiarism, if that is an issue that you would like to dig into more. So, thank you.
Thank you. So just two quick things. So I'm assuming that there are also school committee voted policies in the middle school handbook.
Yes.
So I, or when we actually entertain a motion, whoever makes that motion, if we could also make that proviso for this set of handbooks, as well as the proviso around cell phones. Um, and then, Mr. Lynn, if you look at the screen, I just made a quick, very modest edit to address the conversation, and I'm perfectly happy with just removing it and going back to your original updated language. But if you're still okay with what I put up on the screen, then I'm happy to just move forward in this way because I think it addresses that concern about.
Effectively applying.
Correct. It's it's just moving it from applying or sharing to or excessively applying.
I will prefer going back to my original language because I think excessively now, because some of my staff knows that even one spray it can go to places. So excessively could mean.
I was just trying to address, but it's.
Should we also expand it to include perfumes, colognes, and like other aerosolized substances like sunscreen? Right? And I mean, that may not be an issue, just saying, just maybe simplify the language even to say all aerosolized.
Yeah.
Liquids.
Well, based on what I know right now, the folks that are really impacted by these substances are limited to colognes and perfumes. I'm not aware of anybody that is being bothered by aerosolized, yeah, as sunscreen. And typically, students don't reply sunscreen when they're in school.
Yeah, really.
And Mr. Lynn, you don't have any consequence attached to this.
No, and.
That's good.
Right.
So.
And it's.
So all the things we talked about, because I trust that the middle school is focused on, you know, responsive teaching and restorative practices. So I just wanted to make sure, because I know there are kids on the opposite end of the spectrum for whom that is an issue. So they may not be doing it for a TikTok trend, but for a necessity.
Right. And we typically will when these things happen. Again, we investigate, we find out why, right?
It's always important.
Exactly. And there are times that there are students that makes these decisions over and over again, and we'll treat that differently than that one student who just forgot because they're worried about how they appear to other people. That's those are very different behaviors, and we'll treat them differently.
Right.
Yeah, but for the most part, my understand, my experience has been students just forget because you know, they're they're middle school kids, right? They want to present themselves well. They don't want to stick out because
This is a learning.
It's a learning, and that's what we do with pretty much everything. But yes, you know, there are going to be times that students just because they want to prove a point, and we address that differently. And that typically is not because perfume is because they're trying to achieve something else, and we address that differently.
Right. Perfect. I'm grateful that this policy promotes a conversation. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, I'll accept the motion.
I would move to accept the middle school handbook as presented with the exceptions of ensuring that the school committee policies are reflected accurately throughout the handbook and in the appendix, and with the understanding that cell phone policies will be addressed at a later date.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Because again, we're hybrid, we're going to have to take a roll call vote, Ms. Bowden, I say.
Bye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Ms. Menyarji.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Hi.
And vice chair votes aye. Thank you so much, Mr. Lynn. Oh, enjoy the rest of your ninety summer day.
Yes, the full handbook is now in your folder. So I didn't realize that.
No, of course. Yes, you're Mahoney.
I didn't know I could be making a profit on my car. My old spice, you know, I can sell that at the.
Thanks, Mr. Lynn.
Thanks. Nice.
The car noir is going for.
No clue what was going on. I actually saw Sir Chicarella shortly after, and I said, what is going on? And he explained to me that TikTok trend.
He's on the TikTok. He knows.
He was.
You can also, do you want to come to the table?
This is no pressure to bring yourself to the table, but.
This is Samantha Palacios. She sat on the attendance committee, and she may contribute, she may not. It depends on whether.
No pressure either way. We want to make this as non-frating as possible. So.
Um, welcome. So this is a continuation of the discussion we had last week. Thank you for your flexibility in coming back this week. Obviously, we ran out of time realistically last week and had some other things to discuss. So how would you like to approach this?
I think we can go from what can, I would like to approach it by going probably easier to simple yeses to more complicated conversations.
Okay, great.
So on page fifty, we added vape detector language, and the vape detectors will be used as a deterrent. And how they'll be used, we'll be sending out a letter to fam students and families about the use of them and the that we've put them into almost every bathroom at the high school.
Yeah.
So we wanted to have language to reflect that into the handbook.
Great. Um, I don't think we need to vote on each of them independently.
No, no.
So we'll just let you keep on rolling through. I will put little check marks next to this.
Sure. That are non-discussion.
So we also updated our GPA. It's a not a not a secret. So we decided, you know, we had to have our handbook and our course of studies reflect that as well. So that was simply a cut and paste update.
Right.
That's on page thirty.
Yeah.
Course level changes up and down. We've we've, over the course of the last few years, is on page twenty nine. We have. We tweak this back and forth all the time, effectively trying to make sure that students are in the appropriate course that they are capable of taking, but also that they have an opportunity to move up or down. But during an appropriate time, so not during a marking period, not right before they get a grade. And we're just trying to, we, it feels like the high school is always updating our our handbook. I call it a living document because as students change and as education evolves, we're constantly making minor tweaks here and there. The course level up and change, up and down changes is just a language change to try to make it as clear as possible when the most appropriate window is for students to move up and down into classes. And obviously, there's always outliers to these situations that typically health-related, and so that would just create conversation, inspire more conversation. Enrollment and re-enrollment in credits. That is a very particular to high school. It's a high school specific issue. What we have in our environment, it's pretty unique. It's a blessing of, you know, students want to come here. Oftentimes, I'll go enrollment versus re-enroll. Enrollment, we find that we have students, international students typically will come here after completing four years of high school. And they want to come to the United States to get a high school diploma from the United States. There is some conversation. out there that uh a diploma from Winchester High School or Weston High School, what have you, uh, it will give the students a better opportunity to go to an American college, American university. It also provides them a year of language study. And and um getting into culture and, you know, the the typical um, just the the environment of the United States. What that does for our resources, though, it's a drain on, it's a strain on our resources. We have students that essentially effectively completed high school. And they want to do an extra year that would benefit them, but it's take their, that student's often taking a seat from another student who's gone K through twelve at Winchester Public Schools. And so we were trying to make sure that people understand, um, because there is a business, businesses in the town of Winchester of send me your kids, pay me this money. You don't have, the parents never have to come to the United States. Um, and it becomes effectively a boarding house. And there's not a lot of oversight for these students. And most of them are eighteen, some of them are younger, though. Um, they come and they need a lot more support than the parent, the sending parents would maybe understand. We're just trying to put some curves in place to make sure that that fifth year is not a real, it's not an opportunity in Winchester High School. Because again, it's it's a, it's a use of our resources that we'd like to see um go to students that live in the town of Winchester, grew up in the town of Winchester.
And I'm sorry, you're the first student that do not live in Winchester. How many do?
Well, they do and they don't. Uh, there's a lot of nuances. So some students will come to move to the town of Winchester. Say, you know, there's a, there's a a student that there there are families or people in town that actually have websites that are dedicated to send me your kid. I got my kid into Princeton. I got my my kid, my own child into Harvard. And I will, I know the the secret codes, pay me, your your child can live here. I will take educational rights, which is just a sheet of paper. It's very easy to process. Um, and then the student ends up here and and more often than not, they're they're doing fine. Sometimes they're not doing fine. And that person that is taking them, it's they're running a business and they're turning a profit
Right.
off of what we do here. And so they also, you know, maybe they're taking an AP chemistry class. Well, if we only have fifty seats available because of our resources, then another student who has been going here K through K through ten, expecting, you know, wanting to take that class, can't take the class. Because we basically have a private student enrolled, trying to get either the fifth year or an extra year, or even like their last year, their senior year of high school. So the re-enrollment credits, sorry, sorry, enrollment is based off of students coming here to get an extra year of high school. And and they do, they do reside in town. Um, but they res- reside in town as of September one.
Right. I mean, I like the part where there's someone taking advantage of someone trying to achieve the American dream. Um, however, can we maybe into language that if parents, their parents are residing here? Right? So it's the student that resides here and the parents, this is a new immigrant family. And I know from my, not my own personal experience, but from my family's experience as a new immigrant family, that even if you come here with like a a high school degree from Syria or Lebanon, it's not accepted by most colleges. So what would they, what would you do?
I think that might be a conversation for the committee.
So.
I prefer the conversation.
Language like if the parents are living here, maybe that model would apply differently.
Well, I mean, what if you mean, they go, there's a lot of nuances. What if you're, you don't have parents and you've you've been sent here by a cousin or an older sister? In the fifth year of high school, you can't participate in extracurricular activities because you're taking a space. You can't play sports because you're taking, you you've already uh achieved your your, I mean, it's a, you're talking about a post grad year. And I don't know how to fix that. It, your, the example you give makes a lot of sense. Um, but I don't know if it's our responsibility to address a post grad year for a student coming here.
Just a clarifying question. Are we talking about the the chart that has the credit?
Yeah, so that's, that's exactly what I was, I was asking, Mr. Lynn, pull this up, because it's.
Page twelve-ish.
Twelve-ish.
We never, we never do.
Twelve. Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
If we have a student who arrives here from someplace else in the United States with a high school diploma who would want to enroll.
Exact same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's you, you finished high school. We don't have courses for you because you finished high school. You have graduated your high school and you can't re-graduate high school.
And and there are other options. I mean, there are courses that can be taken through college, community college. And I also just would also mention, you could have a scenario where the student has significant needs. Um, and then we're out placing for those significant needs. Um, they have a terminal degree. Um, and so I think the intent of this, and this happens more often than I would have expected. We have this conversation quite a bit, because there is a cottage industry um that not just in this si- situation, but also for students who have not finished high school yet, who are um coming here and living.
If a student has not finished high school, we absolutely accept them. Um, but we we do have to do a deep, uh, we're talking about technology and um, the age of TikTok and whatnot. There there is information out there how to maybe not include your high school senior year on your transcript. And, you know, a neighboring town got just gotten some recent trouble about accepting a student who had completed high school or or done three, had completed high school.
Um, but could shoot threes all day long.
That could dunk on you. And we don't want to find ourselves in that situation, because there is, we do accept students, obviously, international with missing documentation and and things like that. But when we know a student has graduated high school, it's a, it's a very, it's a, again, it's a resource. It's a use of our resources that I don't think Winchester High School is capable of supporting.
So.
Oh, is that covered?
I can't figure out where it is and.
Yeah, so that's, so I just want, before we ask any more questions, am I to understand that the actual changes are the things that are in red?
Correct.
In this document, which is to say that a lot of the stuff that you're actually speaking about is already in a previously voted version of the handbook.
That's a good question.
Because the the thing that you're talking about, so at my understanding, looking at what's on the screen right now, is Winchester High School does not allow for a fifth year or more of high school for any reason unless the student has previously not earned enough credits, which looks like is not a change.
That's not a change.
So the thing that's actually specifically changing, just that we like focus the questions, is if Mr. Marin scrolls up in the document. Um, the actual table showing the credits and how that corresponds to assignment of grade level, as well as then scroll down. The sentence in red at the bottom that says, please see the chart above for grade level, re-enrollment based on earned credit.
Correct. So everything I was giving you was like the origin and the thought.
Yeah, yeah, no. So I just want to understand for like the committee's benefit, the only thing that we're actually voting on is a change.
Right.
Is this, the codification of credit to assignment of grade? And the fact that that is when registration happens, the chart that's used to actually assign a child.
So we, we, a couple of other examples. So for the re-enrollment or enrollment, oftentimes, again, it it does trend towards international students, but sometimes it's local students as well. They have completed their ninth grade, their parents want them, and they was ninth grade at a a private school, their parents want them to come back and repeat the ninth grade.
Right.
We say no to that, but we haven't had the it broken down in our handbook.
Yeah.
The same thing, a student might go to St. John's Prep, do two years, realize they might not be the best athlete. And say, oh, I want to go back to the, back to Winchester High School so I can play. But they've re, they've already repeated a year at St. John's, and they want to re-enroll in their their current year. But that would give them, again, a fifth year of high school. So we say, no, you've done, you you did, you did your ninth grade here. Then you repeated your ninth grade at St. John's. You're going to be an eleventh grader, because you've got two years of high school eligibility and two years of high school already done. So we try to do it based off of credits versus the exact years. And the allowing the credits also that helps our international students that might be coming from a war torn country, that they have a gap in their learning. And they might be eighteen, but they've only done two years of high school. So, okay, now you're, you're going to be a junior in high school, even though you're nineteen years old.
And based on this credit table.
Based on the credit table.
So then I think maybe the seventy-five and above, does that create a loophole for the fifth, for the fifth year?
I'm uh, I'm not sure I understand.
So seventy-five and above, there's no, so I can come in with two hundred credits and say, I'm actually a senior. This is my fourth year.
Okay.
That was, that was going to be a question as well, that this is, this is the ninth grade issue, but now the twelfth grade issue.
That was.
Tell me a lot about you coming up with questions like that.
I mean, I have the same, I mean, I had the same, full disclosure, I had the same thought. So, I mean, I, so I guess the question. Exactly. But the question is then, is there, what is the number of credits for required for Winchester?
Hundred and ten credits.
So maybe we just say, would you be amenable to just changing it to seventy-five to a hundred and ten credits?
Sure.
Yeah. Is there, is there a need to have a small buffer there? A hundred and twenty or something in case they have a hundred? Maybe not.
Yeah.
I know.
Because I think putting it at our.
And this is, this is something we will come back to, just like attendance, because every year there's a new nuance or a new angle or a new loophole. And and you, we just can't think of every single version. We're just trying to
So we get the.
Get the students.
So. When you say credits, when you say credits, sorry, I'm interrupting. Um, are are these, are, do you mean that these are matching up to like specific subjects?
No.
No. Okay. Or is this just a number?
No, because it is particularly international, their, their transcript would be very different. They wouldn't take four years of English in order to graduate. So.
Right.
Um, it is just a credit number. And it's really seat hours. That's how credits are are
Okay.
uh, figured out. So would they, if they took their native, their native language for four years, they would have X number of seat hours and X number of credits associated with that.
Okay. So that was going to be my question, Mr. Maroney, is everybody doesn't count credits the same way? So uh, you might, you may want a disclaimer somewhere. I'm not going to ask you to go figure it out for every credit. But we may also want a disclaimer that says, based on seat hours or number of days in school or something. Because some schools, one, in particular, I'm thinking some private schools, one class may be one credit. So.
So guidance.
For schools with different models. So I don't think you want to limit yourself to credits when you're thinking about this. But just have some sort of disclaimer that schools using other models will be translated into the Winchester Public School credit.
Yes.
Would, would, what I just put up there, address your concerns?
Where?
The WHS equivalent.
At the the header, the left side, um, column header, number of WHS equivalent credits the student has.
Probably. So there can be like a tendency, yeah.
Our, our guidance staff does this weekly of taking.
Which they want to let people know.
Is it okay to?
I think, I think a WHS equivalent is perfect, because that allows us to be the arbiter of know this.
Exactly.
Because we value it this way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
One other question, is there a scenario where people would come here, max out on the credits, but not have complete other graduation requirements of core courses?
There can be those scenarios. Uh, it it, we have to, we have to determine with that particular student. So say they have a hundred and ten credits, but they never took, they didn't take the four years of English that we require. That, again, we'd start to figure out what's the equivalent of the coursework that they've taken and try to apply it. So oftentimes, a student will show up as a senior and not taking, has not taken the language.
Right.
And then it's I, it's left to me to say, well, should this student graduate this year with one year of language? Or should we say you take one year of language and then you'll take a summer, a summer program and get another year? It's not the same, but it's it's equivalent and it's considered, it's considered an equivalent. Um, and you get your diploma in the summer. Those are questions that that I have to answer based off of students' previous performance and looking at their transcript. So yes, is the answer. And then there's those nuances again.
And and I guess the equivalent, language change we just made would allow you to address that as well.
Correct.
All right. Other questions on this particular section?
Oops.
All right.
Was that the easy one?
That was one of the.
I mean, that's.
Just thinking that.
We're not, we're not jumping into cell phones at this moment, right?
Just kidding. No, so it looks like, so just.
So we're back, we're down to real attendance.
Yeah, so let, so let's just recap. So we've gone through um page twelve enrollment and re-enrollment credits, page twenty-nine course level changes up and down. Page thirty, updated GPA, page fifty vape detectors. Are there any other concerns around those from the committee at this time? All right.
Page seventeen.
So let's move on to whatever Mr. Maroney wants to tackle next.
All right, let's go to seventeen. Um, a question from the committee had come up about school sponsored event and field trips, and you'll see that that struck out. Uh, scroll right back up, please.
Okay.
Um, we consider school sponsor, so historically, school sponsored events would be a class absence. And this is where we'll get into absence versus the N rule application. Um, school sponsored events and field trips, we want our students to go on trips. We want them to go to Italy. We don't want them, that to count towards their attendance. We want them to go to the MFA or even the the, you know, the Gardner or uh, the Griffin Museum. And that shouldn't be a school absence, especially because they've reported to school that day. And it's a school sponsored event. Um, so we're able to manipulate Aspen a little bit, and we're able to put in school sponsored event. Um, and there'll be an acronym for it, so that it'll highlight that the student wasn't in the building that day, but they were still it it still doesn't count against their attendance for the state reporting and things of that nature. Does that make sense?
It does.
Why is it pressed off then?
Because it it's, we, it's not considered an absence, so it's not a, it's an excused absence, because the student is not absent.
Thinking about change management, Guy was the one who actually raised this. Should it then be that we put somewhere that that is considered an in-school day, somewhere in the handbook, just so that folks?
It does say it in the N rule section.
Great, as long as it's there.
It does.
Okay, perfect. All right, so.
So college visits has become a unique, a unique loophole um issue at Winchester High School. And having rising seniors, I can tell you, like, yes, you can visit colleges during April, during the summer, during February. Um, but we have students sometimes taking excessive amount of college visits. And sometimes it's a, you know, an athlete that has a lot of options in front of them. And so we have to talk about that with an assistant principal. Um, and work through that conversation with the parents. But we want to, we want to put some curves in of our attitude about college has always been do the best you can for ninth and tenth grade. Do the best you can with what you're doing as a ninth grader, as a tenth grader. Don't start thinking about college. And we do have students obsessed with college, starting in the middle school, well into the middle school. Those are questions that come up e- even younger. And those are questions that come to me from middle school students, how we're going to prepare them for college. And it's it's disheartening, because they're not focused on enjoying school and and maximizing their opportunities for the, for the sake of learning and growing and and enjoying the process of school. They're just focused on moving forward. So we do have, on occasion, you know, some families that have excessive college visits, and they don't come back with paperwork. So there is, they do come back with TANS from time to time. Um, so we just want to put in a little bit of language that says college visits with appropriate documentation, because it's simple, as as going, I've gone, gone through it. Several members of the school committee have gone through it. You know, you get an email saying, yes, you're booked for for this. And that's all we need, is this a simple email saying you booked it. You booked a a trip. Um, or like, you can, you can, while you're on campus, show us something that you're on campus. Uh, that's, that, you know, that's, that's the the loophole of like, well, what if I'm, if I'm checking out Colgate and I'm checking out Syracuse and, you know, Cornell is on the way. But then book a visit with Cornell, like, you're still going to see that school. Um, all of them can be seen in a day and a half, by the way. And
Hold up your paper.
We're like, oh, like.
Yeah. It's a subtext, yeah.
I won't say, give it, we're, we're saying, give us something that we know that you, you did, you did go to these colleges, like you did benefit from the experience. You didn't just go to Florida on a family vacation and then say you went to the University of Florida campus. Because we're like, you know, some people are, some, sometimes people take advantage of our good nature and our willingness to believe, believe the best in everybody. And uh, we just want to have some sort of documentation to say that, you know, we're not doing this excessively, we're not taking advantage. And then also for those ninth and tenth graders to like slow, slow down, pump the brakes. Yes, you can go with an older sibling, of course. Um, but your older sibling is going, and we'll have that documentation as well. We don't think this is like a a big ask, but we do think it's nice to um, limit, put some curves on it, because it can create a lot of absences.
I like how it's optimized for the comp case, right? Not everyone's going to come back with a TAN. People are legitimately visiting schools. So I I like that you're optimizing for that. Um, the one thing, though, I'm concerned about promoting travel around February and April is because it's astronomically expensive. And I know a lot of families plan, not just for college trips, but any travel, because it has just become I I mean, it's three X, ten X in some cases to travel during those weeks, because we all leave. So I I'm just always cautious about promoting travel around those times because of the cost.
We think about that, but we also get the, you know, parents and tell us, we got great, you know, we're going to miss the last four days of school because we're going on a family vacation. We missed, we we got great, great rates. That's not something that rises to our rate, like, that's not something.
But when you're visiting a college, right, and to say, do that during February break, well, to go and visit University of Florida because you're an awesome football player. Um, that could be a, so probably the University of Florida probably pay that bill.
They did. It's sorry, for our, for our athletes.
For those that maybe aren't star.
The coaches will dictate come to this game. And then like, so that, we know that's out of the athlete's control. Um, you know, respectfully, we, we know that things are expensive, but
Yeah.
we, it's not something that we focus on.
Mr. Maroney, is there any value in saying colleges prior to admission? Because admissions visits I view a little differently than um the whole scale. Let's go see what college I'm interested in. Um.
Do you mean like New Students Day? Because we, we.
It may be Students Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, often fall on school days and.
So what's nice is that you're talking about a senior in the spring at that point.
Yes.
We're not as locked in at that, for attendance for seniors.
Okay.
Um, let's not advertise that, but yet.
As long as we're on the same.
As my sons are about to be second semester seniors, I know.
Right.
Toronto next year.
Yeah. Um, my other question is appropriate documentation, because having gone through this twice now, I could sign up for a million tours and never show up.
Yes.
And um, that I would have the appropriate documentation. But so I'm thinking for your benefit, I might say official documentation or something more in terms of the fact that you were actually on campus.
You're definitely going to get the the folder. You're definitely going to get the the flag. You're definitely gonna get the folder, you're definitely gonna get the the flag.
Right, if you show up.
You might get hit up for a fifty dollar T-shirt at the gift shop.
The word appropriate and and signing up, because, I mean, just for personal reasons, I've signed up for tours for my kids we haven't shown up for. Because, you know, other reasons, we didn't get out of the house that day.
We, we drove to Bentley, by the time it took from my garage to the parking lot, it was fifteen minutes and my son was like, nope.
Yeah, so that's.
We had signed up.
Right, exactly. So I changed the language to a, a, a official documentation or something about actually. I'm okay with stronger language around this, because for people that are using it um, with um, with fidelity and sincerity. This isn't gonna be a problem.
Correct, correct.
Right? And it's, it is the folks who want an extra day here and there, and so they stop at the college on the way back on their drive.
The extra day here and there is okay.
Yeah.
And that's, and most of the language in the handbook doesn't affect ninety-five percent of our students and families. It's the ex.
Demonstrated entrance.
It's the extra day multiple times. Again, we're always trying to get students to be in the building. A hundred and eighty days, be in the building, learn, be a part of the school, be a part of the, the culture of our school, have those relationships. It's the excessiveness. And the rest, all these rules are here for excessive reasons. So ninety-five percent of our students doesn't impact them at all.
Right.
Um, so mindful of the fact that we're already eleven twenty-five, um, we have three more areas to bring up. Are there any other questions on this particular section? Great, so we will put that as checked off.
So the investigative procedures section is, that's, that is just a policy update.
Yep.
That we, that's the same thing from uh, the previous two handbooks.
Yes.
So I think we'll put the same proviso on to the motion maker, we'll put the same proviso about updating language around voted school committee policies. Um, so that's good. And then I think probably.
I'm sorry, could you say that again about the investigative procedures? It was just a, all right, this is Mr. Mahoney.
I think that's part of the policy update that the K through, that you, you had emailed about. We have, we'll have. We have to just.
Align it with policy.
Align it with voted school committee policy.
Okay, because I was just going to say what was in the investigative procedure seemed like it was specific, more specific to the high school. So, and it was.
Yes. But it's, the, the challenge is that it's currently covered under the section on policy J I C F B. And so I think like the other handbooks, what I would like to do is make sure that we as the policy subcommittee take this up again. And make sure that whatever policies are represented in the handbook are consistent to what's been voted by the school committee. And I think the way to handle this is that if Mr. Mahoney has an update that he'd like to have to policy J I C F B. That we cover that through a meeting of the policy subcommittee and then vote it as a committee and then updated in the handbook accordingly. Is that, does that make sense to you, Karen?
Sure, as long, or I guess because what's in the, I thought that what he had um, updated was specific to the high school.
Correct.
So if it's a procedure that the high school is following, but that the other schools are not following, I guess I'm just looking for consistency across the schools.
I think, it's, sorry, then, this is a bigger, this comes direct from our lawyer, Mike Joyce. And so this is a title six, title one, cut and paste.
Yeah.
Um, it is certainly something worth, I think that's.
So I think, Karen, we need to have a subcommittee meeting.
All right.
Because if we adopt this language, which it sounds like we need to consider doing, um, if we adopt this language, it needs to actually be memorialized. Through a vote of J I C F B, both by the policy subcommittee as well as the whole school committee. And so we can't, I think we'll have to use the same proviso that we use for the elementary and middle schools and and pause this until we're able to reconvene for that meeting. Um, it's not that I don't honor that Mr. Mahoney got that from legal counsel and it needs to be voted in. But I think for my own self, um, altering any school committee voted policy without going through proper procedure is challenging. So I think the next step for this is to put the proviso in the motion today for accepting the handbook. And then for us to schedule a policy subcommittee meeting to address this and bring it back to the full committee in August to, to vote and update to J I C F B. Is that okay with everybody? Cause I, I just don't, anything that has to do with, I don't want there to be a different J I C F B for the high school versus other schools. If it, it should be a district policy.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Um, so we can check that one off. So now moving on to um, our last, the N rule.
So the N rule has had a longstanding tradition at Winchester High School and most area high schools. Um, in the year two thousand twenty-one, I believe we went away with it, we went away from it. Um, with the best of intentions about, thinking about, it was just out of COVID where students were hybrid and students were able to. Some students were able to demonstrate that they could learn without necessarily attending every class. And with the best of intentions, we moved away from the N rule. So this quick explanation for N rule for any new member is. It's, it's short for no credit rule. We, we haven't found a better way to say it, because most other schools just call it the N rule as well. Um, what the N rule allows is for a student who can demonstrate that they learn the material, but not attend class. Um, that student, which is rare, as we've found over the last few years, it, it, students do need to be in the building, they do need to attend class. Um, not just for the learning purposes, but for the interaction with their peers, relationship building with their teachers. And just being part of the school and school dynamic, it's true social emotional learning connections. What we found is that students like, you know, when they miss school, obviously they're not learning as well, they're not connecting and growing as well, although some students can. The N rule allows us to create a conversation of you're, you're missing a lot of this particular class, or you're missing a lot of school, and while your grades are good. You're not going to be able to earn enough credit because of seat time. Seat time's a little, it's a little bit of a, you know, there's no perfect formula for it. Um, but right now, our attendance, our attendance policy that we adopted last year is actually really effective. It's, we, it's working really well, and most of us don't like it. Most of us don't like it because it's, it's a little draconian, where if a student is uh, missing class, missing on a test day in particular. They lose a percentage, they lose twenty percent of their test grade, of their, their project grade. It, it's worked, though. It's so, I'll give you some numbers. Um, as of January, we saw seventeen point eight percent overall improvement in our school attendance. Which is a significant number. Our chronic absenteeism, which starts at five, we saw a thirty percent improvement of students missing more than five, five days. Our uh, eight, eight absences was thirty-one percent, our nine absences was fifty percent improvement. And our greater than nine was thirty-six percent. This is a significant improvement and it works, but we don't like that. We don't like this. I'm speaking for the staff, this is why, this is why. Uh, we hear a lot of complaints from parents. So yes, because um, because, and it sparks conversation and more often than not, it works out that we support the students and we listen to the parents. Um, but there's, there are students that'll miss class to not take a test, there's students that'll miss class to not be part of the project. And there's no reason for it, or they have a reason, but it's not an acceptable reason by our standards. So yes, we, it is confusing, um, because as parents, although we made like, you know, clever PSAs and we have a grid. And everything should be easily read and, you know, you can compare it to the handbook of what's an excused absence, what is not an excused absence. It, it's, we're burdened by the understanding of like, this is what we live and breathe, so we don't, we know that uh, it's what's common knowledge to us is not really common knowledge. And so it had create, it's created confusion, although it's really been effective. It's created some bad feelings, although it's been really effective. Again, going to the core of us as teachers and educators, taking twenty percent, or maybe we evolved down the road in a year or so, to ten percent. Um, off of a student's academic. Product, like a product, saying, the student said, I clearly have learned this material, yes, but you didn't attend the day, you took extra days, you, you didn't, you cut the class, you lose twenty percent. Um, or your parents booked a vacation, it didn't call you in, or you were absent sick legitimately and you weren't called in. Um, it's created a lot of conversation, that's been productive and good, but ultimately, we wanna get back to the N rule. Over time, we would like to institute both. We'd like to take the attendance, like the twenty percent. And start to overtime, not, not this year, because after we do something for one year, moving away from it is not a great practice. Especially as it's, it's helped shape our culture a little bit of getting your, getting your student to go to school, getting your student to be in classes. Um, the N rule would, would be a nice like connection connector to um, the attendance expectation. Because N rule is, yes, attendance is, is going to matter, yes, you, you, you can lose credit. But ultimately, going back to like the credits when students are enrolling and whatnot, our students always get more than a hundred and ten credits. We, we cushioned some of the question about what happens if you're, you know, you have excessive credits. Um, our graduate, our students, our seniors typically graduate with about a hundred and twenty credits, which is three, three extra credits. So the reduction in credit doesn't impact the student's grade, it doesn't impact the transcript, but it does create a wake-up call to say like, hey, you need to attend school. For these myriad of reasons of what's good for attending school, um, not the least of which is responsibilities in life and, and workforce and things like that. And the N rule bringing it back would really would help us do that. Now I'm gonna give you a couple of the intent of the N rule. When I first started here, I think we had it for about five years, I think we had to have five conversations and we used it twice. Those students still graduated on time. I'm gonna give you a great example, I think it's a great example. Go back to nineteen ninety-four, a young Anna Betcher. Some of you might know.
I was killing it.
Anna Betcher.
Had hair.
Went to Cornell, not a problem, you know, not a problem academically, could learn on her own. Didn't like attending all classes, maybe took a couple of vacation days, you know, self-styled vacation days, was effectively raising, raising herself a little bit and, and was very mature. She also got sick during that school year. She's been a medical marvel her whole life. And what happened was she had to go, the N rule was instituted because she was missing a ton of classes, still able to do her work. But she had to have a conversation with the N rule committee about why, why have you missed like these excessive amount of absences? And found out is that she needed to have surgery, it hadn't been called in, like nothing had been reported. And so the committee got together and was like, okay, there's no, like, we had the N rule conversation based off of our formula, based off of our format. Now we know Anna might need a little bit more help, a little bit more support, and there was no loss of credit. But there was a conversation started and had, and went in positive directions. Does anybody know who Anna Betcher is?
Anna Paradise.
Anna Paradise. It's a true story, it's a true story. And so she is a big proponent of this, because it helped her. Uh, it supported her, it got her some supports that she might have needed, and it also didn't affect her credit. So this is something we took away. And if this philosophy just wants to talk about the effect, but you don't have to. Uh, of students missing, missing classes, missing in classes excessively, but still being able to do the work. There is, there is a argument, there's a point, counterpoint of, well, if a kid can do the work, you know, why do they have to be here? And I, and I understand that, but they have to be here for a million good reasons. Connecting, besides it's the law, the hundred and ninety days, yes.
Without getting into details about any medical procedure or anything.
Right. We, they shouldn't have to, but if you're not in school and we don't know why.
Right, you can just say medical reasons, right, they can keep it.
Well, we usually require some documentation, like an ambiguous letter, but you know, this, this student is being treated under my care. Okay, great, thank you.
That's.
Along with that is whether or not we need to do any five or four combinations if it's a long-term bonus too. So we do need to ask the question about whether or not he's.
Like, but they can't go to school because everyone's spraying for him?
Yes, if that happens.
So old spice.
So, Mr. Mahoney, being the only surviving member of the school committee at the moment who was here when we, Karen, I am.
I actually remember them when this went away.
Okay.
But I didn't really understand what it was at the time, I remember.
Um, one of the reasons that we got rid of it was not just about the value of being in class or students being able to do the work outside of class. But because it, students felt that it had become punitive. And that it was um, causing a lot of anxiety and pressure. It was, it was an added, um, uh, it was a disciplinary procedure that students felt was held over them unfairly. And that some staff members were using, you know, to um, to try to encourage students. But maybe not in a restorative and responsive way to being in class. So, you know, my question to you is, how are you gonna reintroduce this to students? And be able to talk to them about it in the way that you've just talked to us about it? Because I, I know that is one of the primary reasons the committee at the time um, got rid of it. Was because the students felt that it wasn't encouraging them to be there, but it was creating undue anxiety about their ability to graduate.
So I think it presented the same way, like this is here to help you and support you, it is the law to get to class, to get to school. But ultimately, you know, we're not here to. When we, and like, we tell them the truth, often, more than often than not, is that we're, if we reduce credit, you're still very much going to graduate on time, as long as this trend doesn't continue. And, and our attendance was not great during that time and students weren't held accountable. Um, and so I'm sure there would be a, a teacher that would be like, hey, you're gonna get the N rule, but the student wasn't going to the class, wasn't, wasn't attending. So I think, you know, the delivery might be, might have needed some polish, but the intent is to support.
Right. I think referring to it as the N rule might have some.
We worked out a few names.
Consequences for students to.
Call the credit reduction rule, like we, we came up with, we, we worked out a bunch of names of them, we're like, nobody's.
Negative, the kids, like it.
It has a rule in it.
Right.
I also think for those kids that potentially are working the system in a negative way, this is better for them than the reduction of the twenty percent.
Right.
Of the overall grade. So I think if you were to kind of weigh in the students that are choosing to be absent. More than not, this is more beneficial to them than the reduction in the grade.
We're open to names. We have, we have discussed names and, and again, in, in time, we'd like to have these together as a pair. But in a year or two, take that twenty percent, make it ten percent, take that ten percent, make it five percent.
Right.
And, and just have, just go back to having the credit reduction policy or how, you know.
Branding is important.
Sorry? I totally agree, a hundred percent agree. So we're not the Winchester High School for no reason.
Um, I, I would just add, uh, uh, what you're saying here, it makes a lot of sense in terms of students in the building and, and being connected to the community. And, and it sounds like it's been very effective. Um, I would just, would avoid in for, um, you know. Having two kids who are, you know, being compromised or particularly susceptible things like strep and other things. That would be mindful that we're not encouraging people who maybe are sick and should be home um, to, to not stay home. Because it, it does have an impact on other kids, um, if there are sick people sitting in a classroom with them. And, and I know it's a balance and, and there's a lot of good happening here, uh, but just when I saw excused or unexcused, like, you know. I, I wasn't sure what it did for those kids, but a lot of times you might not have a doctor's note yet.
Right. We, we, we're pretty gray, you know, we like to put the things in paper and then, and then we have to work behind the scenes, because the conversation's not gonna happen immediately. Parent has to get back to you, parent has to figure out what's going on, you know, tell us what they wanna tell us, what they're capable of telling us. It's funny. Um, our school nurses probably send kids home. More often, like, you know, parents like to send their kids to school as, as often as they can.
Right.
So we have to, there is always gray.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why, that's why, again, in my first few years, it actually happened, the N rule was used twice, and those students still graduated on time.
So I just said, I, I was just saying, be mindful, I wanted to speak for the voice of the, the kids.
Mr. Hopcroft, that's what we heard happen, is that we heard from the kids who were actually conscientious about being in school and that they were coming to school. Sick with fevers, they felt like they had to be here no matter what. So to Mr. Yojie's point, uh, marketing's important. And um, you know, I would just encourage the rollout of this to involve maybe the student council or. Student voices in the community that can say, this isn't about coming to school sick, this is, you know, this is community building.
Yeah, we also talked a lot about what that number is to equal an N, and what we ended up doing is just basing it off of Mass State law of. You're only supposed to have seven absences in a school year, so we split it up into semesters of four and four, and it's technically one more. But that's kind of the number we've based it on. Portland to Mass State law, seven total.
And so that's where the attendance really confuses families.
Yeah.
And, and we get that, and then we just, here's the law, and then we continue to work with them. But the N rule allowed, you know, like, when students say like, this makes me feel like I have to come to school when I'm sick. The question is, well, did you take a couple of days off when you weren't sick? You know, were you, were you taking a couple of personal days here and there, and now you're sick? And this is where, this is where real life compounds, you know, did you go, did you go on vacation with your family? And then you maybe took a little, little snooze of a day here and there, and then you got sick, now you feel like you have to go to school sick. Well, talk to us about it, but you, you, you know, you're not in charge of your family's vacations, we always respect that. We, it, it rankles us a little bit when people wanna go away for a week during the school year, but it's not our family. Um, there's always like, you didn't, you, you didn't wake up and you're like, oh my God, N rule. Like, oh my God, I have to come to school now, cause I'm, but I'm sick. It's what led to this situation. And for young Anna Betcher, there was a couple of days that, you know, led, led up to, oh, she actually was very sick. And she needed significant surgery, but her attendance probably wasn't perfect to lead up to that.
Sounds right.
And four also seems like it's not a lot, but because of the W H S schedule, you're not seeing every class every day. So you're only seeing a class within that schedule, within the seven days or the six day cycle, four times. So if you were out for four consecutive days. So if you were out for four consecutive days, you're not missing every class four times because of kind of how the rotation of the cycle works.
Yeah.
So it's four seems. It's not as few as you would think it is.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So, given the fact that we're at eleven forty-five, um I think there are sort of two decision points. It sounds like based on the discussion here, one of them is sort of broadly whether the committee is supportive of reinstituting the end rule. And the second one sounds like a branding concern about the actual name of it.
Well, the roll, the rollout, rollout.
And the rollout.
And I mean, we'll take any suggestions for names for branding, so.
Oh, well, I'll push that to Alex.
In terms of getting to a vote on this today, which I think is the desire, um. Are folks open to this addition? Where are we at in terms of, so, cause what I haven't heard is explicit discussion of whether we support re-adopting this as a committee.
If the committee needs more time, you don't, we don't have to have your approval of this handbook today. But it would, I'm not sure whether the next meeting date falls in line with.
That's what I'm concerned about, cause it's the next meeting is August fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
I support Mister Mahoney's proposal here.
The others, I I'm okay with it, I mean, it it it's gonna help probably a majority of kids. Um who are abusing the privilege and I and just you being mindful and knowing that there's other communities there. Um I do think the way it's ruled out would be helpful and even just looking at this, in the bottom, it says, you know, exceptions to the end rule. Or no credit possibility rule, even just putting that up in the title, so it's clear what it is, but.
Start there.
Yeah, that's all, but I like the con- I I like the the intent of what's here and I know it'll be adjusted as time goes on. Great, but I'm concerned about.
Karen and Michelle.
Um I just, I think as, and I think it's important to encourage conversation between the administration and students. Um regarding regarding absences, um so if, I think. To encourage that conversation prior to any absences that students might have, I think that's important. Yeah, okay, I think I could be supportive of this.
And I think just understanding, um reflecting Mister Hopcroft's concerns and Doctor Hackett's comment about um. It making sure that we're supporting students with five oh fours and um IHPs maybe um uh in advance of rolling this out again. Um if there's any kind of communication that can happen to let fa- those families know that they will be supported to as part of this. Because I can see uh the rollout of this um being some uncertainty on their part of whether their kids will be affected by this. Um I think that a lot of it's what you said, though, that it's, you know, it's state law, right? And basically what we're doing is enforcing state law, so.
Because we have to.
Because we have to, right, so, cause we're a public school, so.
A four year.
A four year public.
Legitimately get, said kids should stay home.
Yes, yes, and legitimately said kids should still stay.
Um so it sounds like.
Communicating that in advance, which I, which we've talked about, um and then also with the student council um input as well. I think that's all beef to this.
And I assume Mister Mahoney, this would be part of your beginning of the year communications with parents too.
Gonna get longer and longer.
Well, we did hear back from some of the parents on the attendance policy last year as well, that to your point, people don't pay attention to affects their child.
Correct, yeah.
So, but at least having that out in advance to families, so that we establish that this has been a policy change.
I think my, my.
You have a very long first PFA meeting.
I think, I think I'll have a lot of links in my, in my back to school letter.
Excellent idea. Do you also um submit to the PFA newsletter?
I don't submit, but I I talk to the presidents.
And so they can.
Weekly. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh uh they they take, so um my Harrison, who's who's trending out unfortunately, but still, still a year, still a strong year to go. Um she gets my Friday memo where, and she takes pictures and what whatever she feels she needs uh for the Monday communication that goes out.
So he has a communication team.
Alright, so I am happy to um.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Well, yeah, so.
Cause we can just do it as presented.
Yes, but I, do we wanna change the name or leave open?
Mister Mahoney noted, this is a live document, so we can continue to have conversations.
So I think at this time, it would be good to accept the motion with some caveats.
Yep, I would accept the high school handbook as presented um so with the consideration. That we will um take up the cell phone policy at a later date. That the school committee policy subcommittee will need to make sure that the policies in the handbook are aligned to school committee policy and state law. And that um uh that we have accepted the end rule as presented, um do we need to do that if we're just gonna change the name?
But leave open the possibility of.
Of changing the title of that particular policy and name.
That sounds great to me.
Second.
Great, um so we'll take a roll call vote, um all in favor, Ms. Bullyne say.
Aye.
Mister Hopcroft.
Hi.
Mister Malyarji.
Hi.
Miss Bergstrom.
Hi.
And the vice chair votes aye, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For all of your work on this and also consolidating all the updates into a handy checklist.
And for having to have the conversations with people when the policy affects them, that's the most important part. So thank you for.
Tell Eric I'll be at Cathedral Ledge this weekend, not climbing though.
Assisting, assisting.
Assisting.
Wonderful, thanks to both of you, um alright, so we're moving on to uh our next meetings. Which um due to a number of overlapping vacations in different time zones, will be next taking place, um I hope you all have wonderful times. Um will next be taking place on August fourteenth and August twenty eighth. Um and then I would accept a motion for us to move into executive session with the caveat that we do not anticipate coming back into session. Um regular session after that executive session.
Just really quickly, we kept on saying a future date for discussion of the phone, that can be August fourteen?
I think it's TB day, but yeah.
Well, that would, that would be the next time you meet, so yeah, yeah, and I think that makes sense, cause that gives us some time to with.
I'll be there.
You are.
I'm out of town, you have no cell phone access.
Are you?
So maybe we'll have to find a different.
I take the fourteen, August fourteenth.
Well, I mean, given.
Yes, FYI.
And are you back, are you back at school on August twenty eighth?
I am.
Is that a, okay, so we're probably gonna revisit. So when everybody gets, so we know what the vacation dates are now, it hopefully will be in a situation where we don't have someone who's plus twelve. Minus six and minus one all at the same time.
Available, truly, anywhere on planet earth.
As someone who.
Oh, I am when I have cell phone access. Yes.
As as I said to Karen, as the one who managed to be the odd person out who was vacationing last year while everybody else was in town. And I was on a meeting until three o'clock in the morning, I think we can figure this out.
I did that too.
Point, doesn't matter.
Right, but let's, so let's revisit, I think we can revisit the date.
Um and then we'll publicize it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we can move forward with that, so these are definitely not our next meetings, but we will have some meetings in August after everybody reconvenes. Um alright, great, so motion to move into executive session is. Second, um I guess we have to do a roll call vote, all in favor, Ms. Bullyne say.
Aye.
The top, Mister Hopcroft.
Aye.
Mister Malyarji.
Did anything, aye.
And uh vice chair votes aye, we are in executive session, um moving downstairs, um thank you so much. Bye twin, twin cam, if we do post this recording.
Enjoy, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.